Okay, it is seven P M. I I pursue it to Governor Baker's March twelfth twenty twenty orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GLC thirty A section eighteen and the governor's March fifteenth order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in place. As well as Mayor Curtis Tony's declaration of emergency emergency dated March fifteenth twenty twenty this meeting is sort of a school committee. But participation will post an audio recording, audio video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible. After the meeting on the season of our website, local will access government channels. A C A scat. With that, I call this meeting a circle school committee to order with a salute to the flag with a long silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States, America.
And to the Republic. We stand one nation.
Under God, indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome back to twenty 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 one. So we're gonna do things all sorts of out of order today. Bear with us and be patient. But first, Superintendent Skipper, will you call the roll?
Certainly, Mister Chair, Doctor Phillips.
Here.
Description.
Here.
Mrs. McLaughlin. Mayor Curtis Tony.
Present.
Mister Green.
Here.
Miss Barish.
Here.
Miss Petone.
Present.
Doctor Ackman.
Present.
And Miss Norman.
Here.
We have a call.
So normally, according to our normal policies, we would do award invitations first. I I hope that Miss Miss Norman and Doctor Ackman don't mind if we do that after we do some of our standard business. With that, is our student representative here?
Should be. Let's see. Where is Brian? Catherine, do you, Santiago, do you see Brian?
I do not see him. I will resend him an invitation now.
While we wait for that, I think Mister Raich has a very brief building update, but important for our conversation. So Mister Raich.
Mister Chair. Thank you, Mister Chair. I'll give you a quick update on our building status. It just says.
Is present for attendance.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, President McLaughlin.
Just by way of review again, the work that we're doing in the buildings has a couple of components filtration and ventilation are critical for occupancy. There'll be additional work for disinfection, humidification to further improve air quality, but that's not critical for occupancy, and this is consistent with the Harvard School of Public Health. Um. An update on our progress since the last school committee meeting, as we discussed, we were able to fast track procurement of the air filters. All of those air filters have now been delivered. They've been installed in the group one and group two buildings and they're in process for the group three buildings. The retro commissioning of the air handling units are in process for the group one and group two buildings, as well as the JFK, the Kennedy from group three. We did encounter some additional maintenance items that are not in our capital improvement. Contract or projects are part of our ordinary maintenance. We brought in that contractor to do some work ahead of our contractor. We've been coordinating with them on a day to day basis. This was a potential risk item that that could have delayed our project, but thus far we're managing it well. So we're actually retiring a little bit of risk there, which is good news. There are some technical details on the retro commissioning for the East that are being worked out with the engineer right now. And so every every day that we're working through those details is an impact to our schedule. Most of the portable units, both the humidifiers and ventil vent filtration units have been deployed to a number of the rooms in the group one buildings, and we're starting to hit the group two buildings and the group three buildings as well. Carbon dioxide monitors, which again, as we've discussed before, this allows us to measure how much air exchange we're getting in the classrooms. It's important that everyone understand that this isn't a total measure of the total success of the program because it doesn't measure filtration. It doesn't measure the humidification or the disinfection. It's simply air exchange, just ventilation. But still part of what we want to do to monitor to make sure that's happening. Apparently, we're not the only ones doing that. The CO2 monitors are now on back backlog. We didn't receive confirmation that they shipped today, so we should have them in hand by the end of the week. We've done a lot of the rough electrical for those, so it's just be a case of getting those installed as soon as they arrive. The work in the wellness rooms is sort of comprehensive. That is in process for each one of the buildings. So thus far, I've been very impressed by the performance of both our contractors and the engineering and project management team. Everything is going as well as can reasonably be expected. Again, a review from our last meeting, there are a number of different risk factors that that we consider that can impact the the schedule from supply chain to labor force to design emissions and unforeseen conditions. And at the last meeting, we laid out this schedule with the band of optimistic and pessimistic days to the delivery of each one of the schools. So I can give you an update based on where we are, both in terms of risk items we've encountered that are manifesting in potential delays and risk we've retired, which allows us to be a little bit less pessimistic on some of those dates. So the high school and the dark red. We have been encountering some challenges in getting that building up and operational. Getting the mechanical systems tuned for occupancy. There's a particular requirement in the building code that's fairly new that came out of the nine eleven attacks on the Twin Towers. It's a stair pressurization test. It's fairly new in the code. We're still figuring out how to get these things to work. That's been causing us a little bit of delays. Shaking down the fire alarm has been a delay. And we've also had some GLX coordination issues and getting the backside of our building and getting egress out of our stair tower. So we've hit a number of complications on that that project. We're now looking for our certificate of occupancy on January twenty fifth or February first. Also, on the negative side, as I alluded to, the balancing in the retro commissioning at the East is hit some speed bumps. There's probably only going to be a couple of days delay, but for now, I'm being a little bit pessimistic and blocking out an additional day and saying that the East would be ready for us on February first. On the plus side, things have been going very well at the at the Capuano, the Argenziano in the West. So I know that that larger scale of green days. We can, I'm feeling better about the pessimism and being able to pull those in. So it really reflected in these dates over here. I've just sort of made the the green a little bit lighter, just to say that we're feeling more confident that we're able to turn those buildings over to the school system on February eighth. Similarly, we've actually got a head start on Kennedy. And I've started that work a little bit ahead of schedule. So I think we can probably pull in the early delivery date of that by a week to March first. And again, the spread on the pessimism gets reined in. So I'm feeling better about that March first date. Work has not yet begun at the Healy or the Winter Hill. So for now, I'm leaving those as they are. Again, these are construction completion dates. There is still there would likely be a lag between that and when students would return, but for SPS to do their logistics and also to think around the fact that the week of February fifteenth is school vacation week. So there might be some logistics around you know, the week before, the week after that vacation week and when you might want to bring students back. So that's where we are right now with the with the schedule. I'm glad to report that most of that is good news. And things are progressing well.
Thank you, Mister Raich. Any questions from members? Mister Raich.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Mister Raich. I guess I have a couple of questions. First, regarding Somerville High School. Is the coordination with GLX necessary to use any part of the building? For example, will the could the certificate of occupancy be issued prior to that being resolved? And then my other question is, obviously, the school that is not on this list is the Brown School, and I've heard from a number of constituents hoping for an update on the status of that. And I know that you provided some information at a city council meeting in December, and I just wondered if you could let us know where that stands. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Miss Barish. In terms of high school, that's a very interesting question. It is the North Stair Tower. So in theory, we may be able to get a partial certificate of occupancy for what we call the phase two building, which is the the wing of the building that's closer to the library and say the old high school. That would be something to consider, but for right now, we're really pushing on on the whole thing. It's also important to note that, you know, we're facilitating SPS access to the building throughout this process so that a lot of the logistics can be worked out while we're still ironing out the egress and life safety under Suffolk Safety Protocols. In terms of.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were done. Continue.
In terms of the Brown School, we are kicking off our citywide a building master plan. We brought on an excellent architect from New York, buyer blender, triple B, B B, and like City Hall, the eighteen ninety five, the Edgerly. We'll be looking at that building comprehensively and determining what would need to be done to renovate that building, bring it fully up to code ADA and reduce the the risk of of things happening like what happened last year with the pipe burst. We'll be doing extensive investigations in that building, even destructive tests, looking behind walls to see what's back there, what what risks would have to be mitigated, and also looking at how we could make that building ADA compliant. This isn't to say that we're moving forward with a full renovation of that building. It is simply doing all the the exploratory and design work to determine what would go into renovating that building. So so that we can look at that in terms of a capital improvement and what needs the school are. If September rolls around and the pandemic is under control and we can mobilize things like the portable air filters in there and get air quality down to sort of a pre pandemic or post pandemic level that we are comfortable with, we could start to occupy that building. If the pandemic is still in in a state where we want that that high threshold of air quality, it's unlikely that we would want to occupy that building. So that there's a lot of work we're going to be doing between now and the summer so that we can ascertain the occupability of that building come September and what the long term plans are for it.
Thank you. Mary, could you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on and then give the question to the Green Line Extension. Yeah, concern. It is a concern. We're not panicked by it. However, we're focused on it because time is tight. It's been tight quarters, as everyone can see from the visual eye. We have a massive high school project that's near completion and over the last couple of years is constructed alongside a massive transportation project, which included bridge work and so forth. So the access issues have been something we've always been, as Rich has described, focused on, but given where we are and the circumstances we find ourselves in. We have a, you know, our concern is making sure that that doesn't lead to further delay. So Rich's team is on this with John Dalton, who's the project manager in the Green Line Extension Team. And I'll be working and working closely with them in conjunction with the John Dalton, but also with state officials to make sure that to join the weekend and make sure we don't lose any time.
Thank you both. Are there any other questions from members? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Mister Raich. I know you've got another long day ahead of you tomorrow, so. Have, thank you for your time. You are free to go.
Thank you.
You reps are here now, so. We have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
You are good to go.
All right. The first subject I wanted to talk about this evening is the Highlander Theater Company is performing Clue on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at seven P M. So tune in if you'd like. Second is the senior superlatives. The senior class has let out a Google Classroom survey where seniors can nominate and vote for their peers for the yearbook. And then the Somerville High School Class of twenty two is already like gathering money for a supposed senior trip. We're raising money for it. Hopefully, by the summer of twenty three, COVID is under control and we are able to go on our senior trip. And last, on Sunday, members of the Sunrise Somerville Hub gathered in Davis Square to do some advocating for the Massachusetts State House Transparency. They wanted to pressure the governor to sign amendments enclosing publicly disclosed committee votes, a seventy two seventy two hour rule, and a roll call votes for sixteen representatives to eight representatives. They wanted to get students involved as well as anyone who came by Davis Square to push the governor to sign these amendments.
Thank you so very much. That's all actually really impressive. Clues are one of my favorite plays. I have a check it out. Are there any questions from members? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much for your time. I know you guys are very busy, so we won't.
I believe.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. My partner, Brian, has a few things to say. I don't know if he's here.
Ah, yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan.
So I just have one thing to say. There wasn't much to report on. But I wanted to report that there was a community conversation held last Thursday on the event that happened on Wednesday regarding the raiding of the U.S. Capitol Building. This event was very scary for many students and adults too, as well as it was a horrible and embarrassing thing that happened. I'm glad that this was an open space for staff. That staff organized as soon as possible for students to feel like their opinions could be heard, not only for opinions, but also a space to feel comfortable in sharing students' thoughts and their feelings. This was also a time for reflection and overall a time to liberate students' feelings. And yeah, that's all I have for today.
I thank you. I think Miss Norman has a question, so please hold you.
Just quickly, if I can hear the rehearsal for the play going on upstairs, but if there's information on how the public can log on to the performance and if there's any donation or how that may work if family, because normally there's a chart at the door. If there's some way that we, the community, can support the theater program in that way. And also wanted to thank Brian for reporting out on those discussions. I think they're incredibly important and my guesses will be having. We're not done with having to talk about what's going on in the country. So thank you for both of those reports.
Agreed. Thank you, Miss Norman, for bringing that up. Are there any other questions?
I was just gonna chime in real quickly through you, Chair, agreeing that I'm just on checking, if you go to www.hislandtheater.org, it looks like that's the best way to access the play Clue. It looks like you have to buy tickets, but I don't really know if that's a transaction or not. I can't, it doesn't process it right now. So I just want to let everybody know that.
Thank you, Miss Petone. Any other questions for members? Okay, thank you so much for your for your for your report. As always, you're you're doing excellent work. That brings us to public comment. By my list, I'm gonna give out a couple of names so people can get queued up. I think we have. Sorry, just wanna make sure my number is correct here. Is how many we have? But it looks like we haven't, I think we have enough that we can do three minutes each. Okay. And so my first three names are Elizabeth Cafrey, Kinga Burundi, and Frito Duran. Elizabeth, you should have the floor.
Hi, Elizabeth Cafrey, seventy one Alpine Street. I continue just to be frustrated and growing ever more tired of being a watchdog and screaming into the void. So this comment is a bit all over the place. It's January and Somerville is one of the few districts that has not allowed a single special needs student back into the classroom. And with no Somerville Public School students allowed in buildings, I've been incensed that the district is allowing community schools at Argenziano into the building for programming. I guess I didn't realize that air quality improved after two thirty and the Ashray report that I read just never mentioned it. So that might, maybe it's in there. Furthermore, how can we preach equity? And then the quasi district programming is running a secret pilot with nothing public facing. Not all the schools can offer this, and not to mention how many parents had to unenroll because two hours for two days of weather dependent programming in New England is just not sustainable. It's not affordable. And then they were not, were they offered the chance to opt in? It's just, it's that time, that space could be used for complex need students, and I don't understand how this is even happening. And additionally, I recommend that the district begin now to create meaningful and broad summer programs to help students make up learning losses in all grades brought on by the politically focused decision making and incompetence of the district at this point. Our children deserve better than this school year, and it's just appalling. Thank you.
Thank you. I've made a mistake and I failed to read the instructions for our policies, instructions for public comment. Which I actually don't have in front of me right now. Catherine, can you send them to me and I'll read them after our next comment? Sorry, it's been two years since I did this, so I made it. But the next person is an old veteran, so I hope she can remember the rules while she while I find them. Kinga Burundi, the floor is yours.
Pandemics because of aggressive corporate farming techniques, incursions into wild area.
You may want to start from the beginning.
Okay.
Probably through, so why don't you start?
Pandemics because of aggressive corporate farming techniques, incursions into wild areas to cultivate previously virgin lands that robs wildlife of habitat and blurs the border between wilderness and civilization. And the globalization of the world will ensure that this will not be our last pandemic. They have happened and will continue to happen at a possibly more accelerated rate throughout history. Note, the black plague fleas, yellow fever mosquitoes, typhoid fever and cholera waterborne, smallpox, the Spanish flu of nineteen eighteen, polio. And despite the vaccine and the deniers, this pandemic is far from over. Online schooling will continue. One way to improve children's online school experience is to pay parents, people to stay home to support their families. While this experiment has been wildly successful in Vancouver, five thousand eight hundred dollars and has been launched in neighboring Chelsea. Apparently, Somerville Mayor Joseph Curtis Curtis Tony may not be brave enough to launch a similar project. Another issue with the district's online learning has been said to be children's inability to log into online schooling. This issue has an easier fix. Recruit multi language speakers who are versed in technology to help families, to teach families how to log on to use Internet. Also, wire the city. Offer free high speed Internet to all residents, regardless of where they live, how many households live in one dwelling. What do we need? High speed Internet. When do we need it? What do we need? Free Wi Fi. When do we want it? What do we want? Free Wi Fi. When do we want it? What do we want? Free Wi Fi. When do we want it? Actually, yesterday. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Miss Burundi. Thank you, Miss Burundi. Next, we have Mister Ann. Rita Duran. We the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Freda Duran, and I live at seventeen Kingston Street, and I'm the father of a first grader at Kennedy. While I remain angry at the city for leaving our kids out of school for so, so long, I want to thank the school committee for their hard work and their level headed approach towards reopening schools. It was good to hear last week experts be so positive about school reopening and to hear the expert chosen by the union say that Somerville is in the top one percent for mitigation measures. I was also pleased to learn that the teachers' unions internal polling shows that more than half of our members want to go back to in person if the city provides metric. I was surprised to see the union statement asking for community transmission metrics, given that their own experts said that these are not the appropriate tools at this point. That being said, I understand that educators and staff want to feel safe returning to school and deserve to feel safe returning to school and need to feel that the city has a plan and a contingency plan. I hope that the city can provide better answers about their real time monitoring and decision process. If metrics are the only things preventing our kids to go back to school, let's just agree on metrics. The city needs to give quantitative criteria for closing classes of schools based on the testing they will perform at schools. The current situation is not tenable. Our kids are not learning. Their emotional health is suffering. In our family, our daughter keeps asking why she's not allowed to go to school, while our younger siblings go to in person preschool five days a week with zero in school transmission so far. Why is Somerville so special that we haven't been able to give our kids a single day of school in the last months? This is really infuriating. I hope the city can get its act together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Portney, then I lead County Field, then Anastasia Colo. And if I mastered that, I apologize profusely. So with that, we will start with, we will give the floor to to sorry. It's one of those days.
Mister Green, we have Leah Bloom next.
Oh, yes, thank you, Leah. Thank you.
Leah Bloom, the floor is yours.
Hi, can I hear you?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
I want to say that to me, it doesn't matter how incomplete a picture is drawn by setting the specific numeric thresholds. That's something that we did hear from the experts at the meeting last week. I think that our top priority has to be giving our highest needs kids back to the services that they're already entitled to, and that needs to take precedence over politics. I like somebody to solicit metrics numbers as well and see if they stick. It doesn't matter to me, it's the school committee, mayor, the union, summer needs to put those numbers out there. Because whoever gets unstuck from this and gets at the minimum our highest needs kids back immediately is the hero. I also want to say that I am very concerned about the long term implications of the delay in getting any of our children. in getting any of our children back to quality, high-quality education. We know that it is not working for many families. We know that teachers are overwhelmed and struggling. And I am concerned about the exodus from the city and the public schools and the way that that is going to impact funding for schools in coming years. And that that is going to derail the progress that our district has made in improving our schools. My family moved here two weeks before my son was born in March because we expected that by the time he was at age to go to high school, we would have a really good high school. And I'm worried that all of the strife between the city, the school committee and the union will cause people to lose faith in those institutions and in our schools. And one of the teachers and I know that we are losing students. And I would like to hear more from our leadership about how we are addressing those concerns and what we're projecting for the future to make sure that we continue our positive trend in improving our schools rather than losing ground.
Thank you. We have Adam.
Hey, how are you? Adam Portney, 52 Beacon. I just wanted to say I am pretty disappointed in our city. We are in mid-January, 10 months after schools closed, after a fairly poor effort in the spring. The schools came back and we said, what's done is done. Let's move on. After speaking with most of the groups involved, I'm pretty comfortable laying blame where it belongs. The mayor's office needs to hand over the schools and the teachers' union needs to stop twisting science and stoking fears in the community with their own teachers. There have been multiple missteps throughout the year. The science, which has been proven around the world, has shown that transmission rates among pre-visitant children is incredibly low. Once the data started to be proven as fact, we watched every school around us follow the data and open schools to lower grades on some sort of hybrid model. I hope that Somerville can follow this and open schools so that our kids can join their peers around the country and around the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eily Kontini Field. Then we will have Anastasia Kolo Katas. And then we will have Lauren Hanley and then followed by Kelly Glatch. And again, I apologize for the names I massacred.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Eily Kontini Field and I live at 215 Summer Street. I heard the sad news today that one of my son's community school's teachers is going to, this was her last day. She has been great. The program has been great. And in the absence of real in-person day school, community schools has been doing excellent work with our younger kids. I did not realize until late last week that community schools gets basically $0 from anyone and they're almost entirely tuition driven. And that seems like a really poor plan for the kids in the city that for this year, this is all they've been getting in person. And it's super important for the youngest kids. So while I strongly would like school to become in-person as soon as possible for high-needs special ed and for young kids, I think that in the intervening time, we should throw as much money towards community schools as possible. Expand the program to five days, four days. Use Magic Wednesdays to magic hygiene, whatever. Pay the teachers more. They are out there in the cold every day and they are helping our kids. And I hope that when the pandemic is over, that community schools continues to be budgeted for. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Next, we have Anastasia. And please, Anastasia, please tell me how to pronounce my name. I don't ever massacre again.
Hi there. Good evening. It's Anastasia Kolo Kitas, 407 Highland Avenue. I'm a parent of a high-need special ed student. I, when I polled their teachers today, it was January 15th was the last they heard that they were going to get be going into schools. It, I listened to your physical engineer or plant engineer, Mr. Rice, talk about maybe the 25th, maybe the first of February. I think there's a breakdown in communication, definitely. If, you know, there's no real idea when high-need students can go back in. I keep getting promised that it's there in the first tranche. They're gonna go in. If they're, yeah, we're working on it. And it's, and I hear this from everyone. But I'm a teacher, 15 years' experience. I'm so, I'm very, very thankful right now that I get to support my, my son at home with his education, but I just don't think that everyone has that luxury. And I think that just with his, you know, disabilities and things, he cannot access the education. He has gone over a month now without a speech therapy, his twice-a-week speech therapy. He has gone occupational therapy. He went for most of the fall without any occupational therapy, remote. When, at what point do you decide, well, they need outside placement, they need another placement so that you, they can get the services that they need, that they're mandated, that they're, that they're prescribed. They're, you know, I'm very, I'm, again, I'm a union member. I'm on my school's negotiation team for reopening. And they've, we've never turned away high-need students because we know the danger they're in. So, I mean, again, I'm speaking from a point of privilege because I can support my child, but not everyone can. And I see how other families struggle, how other children struggle. So I would please implore you, and I was very disappointed with the union's, union president's op-ed because it, you know, it, it kind of belittles all the professionalism of teachers. Because professionals do their best because that's what makes them professionals. They do what is necessary because it's, that's what they need to do. And I think that if, if, if we do not get high-need students in by the first of February, because I thought it was the 15th, I still think it's the 15th because no one's told me otherwise. If it isn't by the first of February, what is the alternative? What is the plan for these students that are not, that are, you know, we're, we're, we're causing them to fall further and further behind? And they need remediation immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lauren Hanley.
Chair Green, Lauren Hanley just texted me. I think she's still at the hospital.
Oh, okay. I thought she said she was back, but you're right. That's what it says. And also neither does, it looks like Kelly Glatch is also has left, but if she's here, floor is hers. And I think she is not.
Looks like they're both gone, Mr. Green.
Right. Thank you. So I think that is the, that was our last public comment for the evening. So thank you all for your comments and I apologize. I promise you that when we do this again in two weeks, I will have the blubber in front of me and I will read it. That was, it was mine. I'm alone. So with that, we will take some things out of order. On business, business, item A, risk mitigation discussion. So, and with that, I want to start by saying that the efforts to determine what is and is not, you know, appropriate and what, what regulations they're doing for schools has been very much a moving target. I want to thank the city. I want to thank the SEU. I want to, I want to thank our district staff. I want to thank my housing school committee for what has been a lot of work in the three weeks since we first heard the city's, the city's proposals on thresholds. But as it said, this is a moving target. And so because of that, because of ongoing negotiations with the SEU and the need to respect the privacy of negotiations, we are going to do something we don't normally do, which is to have an executive session to discuss negotiating strategies. It's part of our meeting. We will then, after that, at that executive session, assuming that members vote to go into it, we will come back to have a deliberation about risk mitigation publicly as well. So with that, I will enter a motion to enter the executive session.
This is Emily. So moved.
Ms. Dr. Ackman, for purposes of compliance with open meeting law and regarding the session, can you actually read out the reason for going into executive session? It's in your agenda?
Yes. I, to move, to move, can you hear me?
Yes.
I moved to enter executive session pursuant to MGLC 30A, section 21A3 for the purpose of discussing strategy as it relates to collective bargaining with the Somerville Teachers Association, the Somerville Educators Union, right? SEU as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee as declared by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second, by Eleanor.
Thank you. I have a motion by Dr. Ackman, seconded by Ms. Barish. Is there any discussion? Superintendent Skipper, will you call the role?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, Dr. Phillips.
Yes.
Description?
Yes.
President McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Cortetoni?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Ms. Peton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Committee votes unanimously to move into executive session.
At the completion of the session, we will return to open session. Members, please go into exec two, the meeting link you have for exec two. And the public is welcome to wait. We will, we will come back. This meeting will remain open while we are gone. And I will see my fellow members in exec two. Thank you.
Ms. McNulty, you too should exit this meeting and enter on the exec.
Thank you.
At eight thirty eight PM, I call this regular school committee back to order. An executive session, a vote was taken to allow the negotiating team to continue to bargain all elements of the opening plan with the teachers union, including conversations about thresholds and metrics. And now, having heard over the last two meetings of this body, some real school committee has heard from the city and experts regarding risk mitigation strategies and efforts to keep reopening schools safe in times of COVID. And so I'm now giving space for this body to deliberate what we have heard and to share their thoughts as to how it is that we have a safe reopening of schools given our responsibility. Do we have any members who would like to address the topic? Ms. Barish, then Ms. Norman.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to thank my colleagues and the other folks who made it possible to have the outside experts who came to speak to us last week. I think it was really helpful to have some outside voices that hadn't been a part of our conversation prior. I was particularly heartened by their their, the fact that they expressed that they saw the plan that we have thus far been following as one of the best in the state, if not the nation. And I I was also glad that we had so much public there. I'm also grateful to the folks who made it possible to have interpreters present so that those messages could be shared more broadly. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Norman.
Well, like Ms. Barish, I am grateful to Dr. Feldman that the SCU brought forth and the other fine doctor whose name I am not recalling. And that both were so clear about what we're doing in Somerville, what we've already enacted and what is in the process with the buildings and the contact tracing and the surveillance testing is unlike anything else we've seen. I think so much of this has been difficult. One, the nature of the virus as we learn more about it, but also there isn't a model for this, right? And I can't help but point again that there has been no federal or state leadership on this. And so each district has been making it up on their own. I mean, even, even if we had been divided into regions or some guidance from someone. So with that, I have to say I'm grateful to as a community, as a city and as a school that we've been digging in and trying to understand to bring back. I mean, obviously the top priority is the safest return, safe return to school for our students and our staff. And it was very helpful to have those two outside perspectives come in. I mean, I'm still there's more to be, there's always going to be more to learn, but it was helpful. And I also do want to thank, I mean, we were gone for however long and there's still over 100 people here tonight. And so I also want to say thank you to the community and on in every role that you have for participating because it's really important that we hear from everybody. So thank you for that.
Anyone else? Or Ms. Patone?
Sure. Thank you through you, Mr. Green. Yeah, the having the expertise of Dr. Feldman and Dr. Cernella was really powerful for me. I was able to ask a ton of questions, particularly understanding better questions around infectious control and virus transmission in our schools. And it's challenging right now. We're in a place where the city has been representing thoughts about, you know, what's going to be the best risk mitigation and you know, putting forward concerns about, you know, thresholds or not thresholds and then having you know, educators who are very concerned about also coming forward with concerns and having them kind of in opposed places. And that's been a really hard place. So having some more expertise was really helpful. You know, and also shedding light, I think that in all the challenges and fear and concern, which is all valid, that fear of families that have families that have fears, educators that had fears, somehow it was lost in our community, in our conversation, how tremendous the plan is. And how, you know, it is not a light thing to say that one of the doctors stated that it was the top 1% of plans in the nation in terms of risk mitigation. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal and I'm so thankful for it. But of course, as I've said before, I'm super challenged by the fact that even with this beautiful plan, this testing that could be a huge benefit and asset to our community and to families that are currently not accessing testing, our kids are still not in school. And, and that's the messages we're hearing from some families is that, you know, really suffering, we're really struggling, we we can't continue like this. And hearing from families saying they want to leave the district, they want to go to parochial school, they'd hate to do it, but that their kids are just not being serviced has been really incredibly painful. At the same time, hearing from educators that they feel uncomfortable and afraid. And so shedding light to the fact that our mitigation plan is so well done and thought out and invested. And thanks to our mayor, our public health, our nurses, our administration in the district, it's, it's a really beautiful place to be. But now we have to move forward and try to merge or connect this disconnected point in terms of what feels comfortable for people to come back. So again, thank you to the chair. Thank you to my colleagues for setting this up. I think we have quite a conundrum on our hands, but I do believe that people want to create the opportunity for, for our students to come back to in-person learning. I think that it seems to be in alignment now. You know, knowing when our buildings are going to be ready is challenging, but I'm going to get behind whatever I can to support that return and figure out how we can come together and solve this challenge. So thank you.
Dr. Phillips?
Um, so I'm going to get a little personal here and please tell me if I'm out of order. Many of you don't know this, but I'm intimately familiar with death. My mother is dead, my daughter is dead. And as an elected official, I am terrified that someone's going to die because of a decision that I made. And so I really feel it's important to be able to look every parent in the eye and every educator in the eye and be able to say this is how I know our plans are working. So I think it's really critical to talk about thresholds. And I have to say that the conversation last week from the experts really convinced me that what what they were telling us is that it's less concerning to them that people are bringing COVID to school, right? We're all walking around all the time. We go to the grocery store. There are people with COVID there. What's really concerning and what we should be terrified of is people getting COVID in our schools of in-school transmission. And that's the issue. I'm really hoping we can get clarity around so that we can make sure we can communicate with confidence that that's not happening in Somerville schools.
I'm going to go ahead and call myself. And so I think, you know, I have been clear for months now that the only thing that would be worse for me than than maintaining all remote indefinitely would be a situation in which we had our thousand privileged students come back and all of our low income, black, brown, and otherwise disadvantaged populations not come back. And this worries me because we've seen, we've seen it happen in other places. You know, New York City is the most prominent example where a district that is normally overwhelmingly black and brown currently is not because those families aren't coming back. And I think the only, I think the best thing we can do to actually have those families come back, because we know we want them to come back, is to do everything in our power to both create safe schools, which I was deeply heartened by the experts last week to, to hear that, you know, even, even experts who have thought that, and actually I thought, thought that I agree with, a lot of districts rushed back to school putting aside the inequities of this, of this horrible, deeply inequitable pandemic. And put aside the fact that urban schools were by and large under infrastructure, et cetera. And even districts who thought that, that district made a mistake in doing that, think that Somerville is not doing that. And that Somerville is doing everything it can to actually have the safest schools it can possibly have, top 1%, to use that phrase that has resonated with so many of us. So I'm glad we've done that. To me, that's the first step in actually having a district where everyone comes back. But I'm also deeply aware, being the child of a woman who became a nurse because black women in Louisiana couldn't become doctors, of the deep history of deserved skepticism a lot of our communities have on issues of public health towards just trust us. And so the other thing we have to do to those point is be as transparent as possible about why we know that schools are safe. is be as transparent as possible about why we know that schools are safe and how we will know that is no longer the case. If our systems aren't working, if they're not up to the challenge of a raging pandemic, all of these things. And so I am looking forward to continuing conversations with the city. We've been a great partner in trying to think scientifically with their staff. We're going to be critical partners in building trust in the community and with this body about how it is that we can address a frankly deserved skepticism in large parts of our population. I think our schools are safe. I think we've done everything we can to make them safe. And now look forward to the process of building trust in the community and that reality. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay. If that's the case, then we will move on. We will, I think we will do the superintendent's report and then we will do some fun before we do some of the last one stuff. So, Superintendent, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to actually ask Mr. Mazza, there's a few things that we are going to expound on come Monday, Monday, the 25th. But Mr. Mazza has two items in particular. And so I'm going to ask him to just give a quick synopsis with the understanding that he'll provide a memo and then he will talk in more detail on the 25th.
Correct. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper. Through you, Chair Green. The first thing that we will be talking about on the 25th is the upcoming school calendar for the 2021-2022 school year. And the second thing will be, I will give you an updated timeline on our Somerville High School principal search. That's very important that is coming up. And I want to make sure that the committee is aware of the timeline that we will be following for their process. The other thing I will talk about quickly, and this is the one piece that I have a memo for you. If it's not in your packet tonight, I'll make sure that you have it first thing tomorrow morning, is around the commissioner sent out a memo on January 5th about modifications to MCAS and a few other things. And it came in five buckets. And I'll give you the buckets right now and then I'll expound in the memo for you. The first is the modification of the competency determination for the class of 2021. The second button bucket is the shortened MCAS testing time for grades three through eight. The next is the accountability relief. And then we have extending the access testing window, which we knew already. And then there's something on the MCAS biology test for ninth graders. So the memo that I will have for you will give greater detail into those five buckets. And then the impact on the high school students at Somerville High and full circle with numbers around the competency determination and the MCAS biology tests. So I will have that for you tomorrow. And then on the 25th, we will talk about the upcoming school calendar. And we will talk about the Somerville High School principal search.
Thank you.
And so just to remind everyone, we will be saying goodbye to Mr. Principal Lagamina after his many years of service here in Somerville. And he is somebody that I would, we plan to have come to the next school committee meeting because I would like to be able to do that virtually, but yet in person on the screen. Part of that, as you remember, for those that were here as part of the committee, back three years ago, we launched a search, which was a state and national search. And so very similarly, we will be doing that with a little bit of a condensed timeframe to it, having done some of the key parts of it, such as the visioning and the key components of the job description and so forth. We will not need to do that from scratch, but rather to, from the orientation from three years ago. So we will give a full update, including, as Assistant Superintendent Mazza indicated, the firm that will be doing it as well as the timeline of the process. And we will make sure that both the community will be sending an update to the high school community so that they are aware of that timeline in the search firm that has been selected and how they, most importantly, can be involved in that process. So more to come on that. I would next like Dr. Curly to give an update on a topic that was brought up tonight at public comment. I know there's a lot of parents that want information on this and that has to do with our community schools program, the pilot that is going on at the Argenziano, and then what may be happening beyond the Argenziano in terms of expansion of the pilot. So, Dr. Curly.
Thank you, Superintendent. Through the chair. So I appreciate the chance to give a brief update on community schools, our district after-school program. You know, I think many of these conversations were recognizing the importance of trying to get students any and all opportunities for safe in-person social interaction, especially as we're now in increasingly tough winter season. And since the original in-person return date moved in from early December, we tried to figure out how we could continue to run that program despite the weather conditions. So the district worked with our city partners to propose a pilot for kind of an indoor/outdoor after-school enrichment option. Our city health experts deemed that this indoor pilot was feasible basically because it's a limited amount of time where students are spending no more than one or two hours in the buildings. And it's also a small number of students relative to the students that were looking to return as soon as possible. There's been some confusion, I think, about the ventilation standards. Those ventilation standards assume a much larger student capacity and they also assume students are back the full day. So sort of taking all those things into account, we felt like it was perfectly safe with all of the other mitigation experts in place to try a pilot with the after-school program. Why did we do this at the Argenziano? The reason we did it at the Argenziano is because that is the site that we have for the past four weeks been doing regularly weekly testing, COVID testing of building-based essential staff. I'll talk a little bit about that in a sec. But we have that testing in place. So remember that we have a partnership with Tufts and the Broad Institute to offer weekly assurance testing to students and staff. We didn't want that resource to go to waste. And so we are, we've begun having students participate in that testing in order to come back inside during the cold weather. Community school staff, I think, has been noted rightly by a lot of parents. They've been working directly with our students since July of this year, or last year, I should say. They've been extremely supportive of this pilot. They have been participating in weekly testing since we started that in December. And so we took all of those factors and we, as of two weeks ago, sorry, child intrusion here. We proposed to the parents that if they wanted to participate and were willing to have their students do weekly COVID testing, that they could come inside. I'm happy to report that that pilot's been very successful. We have now expanded it as of tomorrow to the Caboana, which is the next site that will have COVID testing available. We are looking to grow this as fast as we can grow our testing capacity. So I know that there are parents and guardians across the city that are wondering how soon this could be available at their school sites. We're going to do it as quickly as we can. So next up would likely be the east and the west. We're looking to hire a kind of a mobile EMT or medical professional that could bring testing to the sites that wouldn't necessarily have it as part of the immediate in-person return. And just a couple of final points, if you will. I want to address that this in no way takes away from our commitment to bring high-needs special education, EL, and younger learner students back as soon as possible. Again, this is a question of having the buildings be ready to that level that Rich detailed on the timeline that he detailed. But in the interim, we believe this is a perfectly safe and effective way for students to be back and have some social interaction in the winter. Very quickly on the testing, because I know that was a lot of information. The district and the city have now administered over, it's almost 1,100 PCR COVID tests in the last four weeks to nearly 400 individuals. Most of these, as I mentioned, are building-based essential staff, but they now include about 40 of the students in the Argenziano community schools program. We're testing on Tuesdays and Fridays. That mirrored the in-person return schedule. And I called our health director right before this meeting to check. I'm happy to report that we have had well under a 1% positivity rate. And we have been seeing the results come back within less than 12 hours, which is incredibly helpful for us because we can use that information for the few, in this case, adults who have tested positive, to be able to let them know and make sure they're not coming back into work. So I just want to thank community school staff who have been at this despite the cold temperature and for the last few weeks. And I want to thank our health partners and our rec partners who are working directly with kids to make sure they have that outlet. Thank you.
Great. Chair, I'd like to pause for a moment to see, I know, because I know that this was, there were a lot of questions that came in on this. So if school committee has any questions.
I was going to do the same thing. Dr. Ackman.
So in part, due to how successful community schools have been, I personally have heard from a number of constituents who were curious at sites that have low attendance about switching to four days a week with the knowledge that it would go back to two days a week, you know, when schools open. And I'm wondering if that is a possibility. Like I, you know, I'm wondering if it's a possibility because, you know, that's the downside, upside of them being so good at what they do is people want as much of it as they can get.
Dr. Curly, did you want to make a note on that?
Yeah, sure. I'll make a note. I mean, we are looking at this. It's a question both of making sure we have staffing to handle that and then also to make sure that parents would know that it would be temporary and we will be returning as planned to a hybrid where students would be in a two-day-a-week format. So it would be a temporary dissolution of the cohort system until students come back.
May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
What can I specifically, can I tell constituents who ask? Is it that you're looking into it or is it, does that make sense?
Yeah, sure. So through the chair, just that we can't make that announcement. I know there was some information going around, both informally and maybe formally at some of the sites. We can't make that decision until we can ensure that it can be safely staffed. And so we're working to make sure that we can safely staff having students in four days a week. As soon as we can ensure that, we would look to try to do it.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions from members? All right, hearing that, I just want to thank, oh, Ms. Paton.
Through the chair to Dr. Curly. You mentioned 1% positivity rate. Is that taking into account students being tested or is that just staff at this point?
So that includes the roughly 40 students that have participated. It's, to be clear, well under 1%. Given the limited number of tests and participants, legally, I don't want to go into too much specificity. But these are, I mean, these are numbers that we are working to stand up on the district's COVID testing dashboard. So at least show the public, staff, and students the overall number of tests administered each week, the total number of positives, the percent positivity rate. But fortunately, it's been an extremely low number of staff who have tested positive so far.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Barish.
Thank you, Chair Green. This isn't directly related to community schools, but sort of, in my, I feel it sort of goes hand in hand. If you could, Superintendent Skipper, let us know or let me know what opportunities there might be or perhaps that are already happening for other groups to be in buildings, other groups of students to be in buildings between now and the reopening, the full reopening of our schools.
Through Mr. Chair. So this is something, obviously, that as the building plan, to be able to bring the buildings online is coming into a narrower risk piece and we can actually start to put the timeline to it, you know, we're going to look at to see what else, you know, what other groups might be able to be accommodated. I think, you know, each group that comes in, we have to ensure that for the integrity of the safety component, the testing, what space is used. There's lots of logistics that have to be, that have to be worked out. So it's not too, right now, our priority is community schools because it is the K-8 and it is the youngest students to ensure that. We are also using the Argenziano as a place that we can do some of the testing for our special needs, highest needs, special education students. So we are attempting to, you know, to try as we can to expand the amount of what we can use. But, you know, once the mitigation, the full mitigation of the buildings happens, as Mr. Raish had shown you, then we can really start to kind of layer on and add other parts to the building. So we will certainly keep you up to date on that week to week as we meet at school committee, if there's something else that's been added.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, a quick follow-up. Can you just clarify, when you say testing, do you mean like evaluations as opposed to COVID testing? I just want to make sure that I understand. Okay, great. Thank you.
Correct. The space is there and, you know, Christine Trevisoni and her staff are working to determine there is an online testing, psychological testing and so forth for students. So some of that is being done where it works remote. And then for other students, depending on what type of test it is, it's much more beneficial to have it in person or it can only be done in person. So we are able to use the Argenziano, having worked with the city in one of the largest spaces with a very small population.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Paton. You're muted, Ms. Paton.
You're muted.
Getting button happy, sorry. Thank you, Chair Green, through you to the superintendent. This is an extension, I think, of what Ms. Barish spoke to. You know, the schedules for buildings mid-February, early March. I know everything is not completely determined and it's not completely solid, but it seems to be, I know some things are coming in and some things are going out. And that still gives us a good chunk of time. We have a month before Feb break. We have, you know, a couple of weeks right after Feb break that we may or may not be in a position. And we know this is all dependent on bargaining, but we may not be in a position to have our, you know, full school in. Is there consideration being given to providing services to our special ed students? So not full school, but students who need speech therapy, students who need occupational therapy. This seems to be a particular pain point. And I guess the parallel with community schools is how the city has allowed us to use some buildings with very small populations of students because, you know, it's not as so taxing on the filtration and ventilation needs. And I would think the same thing would apply to the smaller populations of students who are not getting these services or are not able to access them remotely. And so I'd just like to hear any thoughts on that or also encourage that we prioritize that if we have four or five, however many weeks people can possibly be in person. Thank you.
Through, Mr. Chair. So it's an excellent point. I think in some of those cases, that may be unit work. And so we have to look at that as connected to the bargaining process. In other cases, where it is contract work, I know that Director Trevisoni is actively looking at that and looking at the spaces available. In general, these would be big spaces. So we would be talking about, you know, since the gyms are being lined up for the testing, it would be the cafeterias or the libraries or in a rare case, it could be an auditorium for, in the case of East Somerville. So the answer is yes, we're looking at all space. Our goal is to try to get services, whatever services we're able in person to our kids. And while we actively work to come up with a cohesive plan, And while we actively work to come up with a cohesive plan, um, with our, with our units, uh, to get everybody back. So.
Thank you. I really would tremendously support that. So thanks.
Um, okay. If there are no further questions from members, just let me double check the question queue. Um, okay. Then I want to thank, uh, Dr. Curly for, among other things, making me feel a bit good about the fact my kid isn't the only one who's still trying to stay awake tonight, but, um.
Chair, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge Dr. Curly's hard work. As Chief of Staff, Dr. Curly has had a catch-all this year of a number of large and important buckets of work. And true to his fashion, he eagerly embraces and learns whatever it is that is thrown at him. But I can't say enough how much he does. So for my public thanks, but for school committee to know that as well.
I, I, I hope that school committee recognizes this because he has been invaluable in trying to become a, uh, become a quick epidemiologist as we've all had to all of a sudden adopt public health as part of our jobs. Um, and yeah, I echo the superintendent's immense thanks for all the work you've done.
Thank you both. And as people who watch regularly, you'll know my children in the pandemic are never asleep before nine o'clock anymore. So I'm always happy to prove that out for any parents watching. Thank you.
Great. Um, I do. So just before I share some brief notes on the upcoming events, um, in the district, I, I want to take a moment to address last week's incredibly disturbing events in Washington. Wednesday's insurrection was not just an assault on our democracy and our values as a nation, but it was yet another example of how deeply racism lives within our country and a reminder of how much work we still have to do to dismantle the systemic racism that continues to impact our children, our families and our communities. As educators, you know, we must not only try to make sense of the, these kinds of events for ourselves, but we also have to be prepared to support our students, providing space for the students to ask questions, much like our high school representative shared happened at Somerville High School. A place where they can safely express their concerns and try to understand the impact that these type of events have in the context of their own experiences. As we're all painfully aware, history can sometimes be really ugly. And we have a responsibility to speak out when we witness inequities and to do what we can to learn ourselves and to help our students learn from these painful experiences. We all have a role to play in that, becoming an anti-racist community here in Somerville Public Schools. And it starts with acknowledging and confronting racist acts. Our teachers and curriculum teams have been sharing resources and providing age-appropriate opportunities for students to engage in important dialogue and learning around last week's events. Some of our students and staff, last week's insurrections surfaced past traumas. We are also continuing to provide student supports and staff, maybe an additional support in processing the events. Our staff stepped up, um, you know, met right away to determine how best we can support our staff going into classrooms the next morning, held, you know, very quick meetings with all of our staff. SEU membership also, um, SEU leadership sent out, uh, notification and, and had conversation with members so that we could come together collectively and support our staff and in turn support our students and families. So I'm very proud of the work that we've been doing in this area with Somerville Public Schools. It's unfortunately an ugly reminder of all the work we have yet to do. But I do appreciate the way we as a community came together here as a family in the Somerville Public Schools after that difficult, uh, event. With that, just a few reminders. Our student reps, um, highlighted that the Highlander Theater Company will be presenting three live stream performances of Clued this weekend. The shows are Friday, Saturday and Sunday at seven. Ticket prices, basically pay what you can. Each performance will be followed by an interactive post-show online activity. You can visit them and I think, uh, counselor, I, I'm sorry, I think Ms. Paton shared this, but HighlanderTheater.org backslash live for more information to purchase the tickets. Also, uh, a reminder that on Monday, the January 18th, Martin Luther King Junior Day will be celebrated and it is an official school holiday. There's no classes on Monday and all schools and district offices will be closed. We look forward to welcoming our students back to our online classes on Tuesday the 19th. The Somerville CPAC hosts its January meeting and workshop tomorrow, January 12th. CPAC meeting is from six to six forty-five, will be followed by a special presentation by Lynda K. Murphy of her new book, declarative language handbook, using a thoughtful language style to help kids with social learning challenges feel competent, connected and understood. And you can email the Somerville Parents Together at gmail dot com for the Zoom link if you wish to attend. Finally, in partnership with the city, we'll be hosting our next Schools Town Hall, uh, online events on Tuesday, January 19th. There will be a town hall for staff, which we will be sending notice out for staff, uh, tomorrow. Now be from five to six. Um, and then the community town hall will take place from six thirty to eight o'clock. Uh, at that town hall, at both town halls, we'll be sharing information about how community members participate. I'm sorry, we'll be sharing information about our reopening plans. And if you're, you need additional information for how community members can participate in the town hall, that will go out this week via email. And we look forward to giving you as much update of information and timeline as we can, as we continue to work through our reopening plans, um, with all of our union partners and look forward to our revisions of the building schedules. So that concludes my report. Thank you very much for your patience with that.
Thank you, Superintendent. So if you've noticed this evening, several members, including myself, have had trouble uttering the phrase Chair Green. That is because for the last two years, we've, we've had the blessing of, of the leadership of Carrie Norman. Um, and so we're going to take a moment to, to thank, to thank her and former vice chair Emily Ackman. Miss, I will start with the reading of a resol, of the resolution for Ms. Norman. Ms. Captain?
Sure, I am happy to do that. Let me just call it up. And I also just want to publicly thank Eleanor Barrish for helping me write these kind words. And with that, whereas Carrie Norman has served as Chair of the Somerville School Committee for the year 2019 and 2020, and whereas Ms. Norman has guided the committee with grace and perseverance during a global pandemic, and whereas during Ms. Norman's tenure as Chair, the school committee developed a progressive new equity policy. And whereas Ms. Norman has offered invaluable advice and encouragement to her colleagues as the school committee navigated unprecedented challenges. And whereas Ms. Norman's commitment to the students of Somerville Public Schools has been unwavering, always keeping what is best for the students of SBS at the forefront in any decision and celebrating the accomplishments and growth of every student. Therefore, be it resolved that the Somerville School Committee publicly acknowledged the efforts of Carrie Norman and be it further resolved, this well-earned resolution be included in the minutes of tonight's meeting and that a framed copy be presented to Ms. Norman.
Also, by tradition, chairs of the Somerville School Committee will be receiving a plaque from MASC. I am, I am, I am told that it is currently at the, the office in Edgely and will be getting to you along with the resolution shortly. Um, I will entertain opportunities for members to speak, but I'm going to go ahead and use my prerogative to speak first because I am selfish that way. So it's, you know, it's worth noting that Carrie Norman was Chair my first year on the school committee way back when. Uh, she was also my vice, my invaluable vice chair when I served as Chair last time and has led this district, uh, for the last two years. I think therefore it goes without saying that, that Carrie Norman is imprinted in my mind as what the Somerville School Committee Chair should look like. To say that I have learned from, from Carrie is a grotesque understatement. I've said publicly, I will say privately, and I'll tell anyone who knows, no one in the city of Somerville cares more about the students of Somerville Public Schools than Carrie Norman. Um, and that permeates everything she does. And because that's her, her, her guide star, her lodestar, it's never about ego. And that it's incredibly important in this work, you know, speaking for myself, I think, you know, Carrie will not mind me saying that she and I have had some real, like, you know, real differences of opinions over the years. Some real frank discussions, I think is the term we use. But because the main thing is always the main thing and because it's always about the kids with her, it's always done with a spirit of how do we do this better? How do we get this work forward? And it is never done with recrimination, with ill feeling. And I actually think every time we've done it, we've come out closer and stronger for having had those conversations. And just as a, one last thing I want to say is because of that deep, deep concern, we have 1,100 employees and I feel like Carrie Norman knows all of them. And remembers their, all their names and which is a skill I am deeply envious of. And we, we, the city of Somerville could not, could not ask for more from a school committee member than if, if Carrie Norman, we are blessed to have, to have her membership. We have the best, we have the best of our leadership. Um, Ms. Paton?
Oh, did I? Great. Through you, Chair Green, to Ms. Norman, um, I will do my best not to, to cry. It's been a tremendous journey with Carrie. Carrie and I started on the school committee seven years ago. And, uh, I never imagined when I met her on the tot lot many more years ago at the Healy School that we would both, you know, parlay our collaboration with educators and our support of families at the Healy School into running for school committee. And then to witness Carrie's evolution, growth, how she always leads with empathy and compassion. You know, your heart is, is so large. I, I can't imagine how you can stand up some days because, um, it can be very heavy to carry the burden of what goes on and the challenges that we do have. So, you know, from office hours at Market Basket, unofficial office hours at Market Basket and the soccer fields and the hockey rink. And, you know, Carrie is about, people don't realize things like Carrie has volunteered pretty much every year since, um, she's been on school committee and way before that in the classroom with students. As, as one administrator put it, you know, she's someone who really walks the talk and that is stuff that feeds her. So I could talk for hours. I'm thrilled that I didn't write your resolution, Carrie. Could, it would have been sixteen pages long. But thank you for your leadership. Um, you know, we've got some big challenges ahead of us and, we've talked about actually how amazing it can be to be coming off of school committee chair and take all the knowledge and experience you have and provide leadership within the committee because, um, we are all needed right now, um, as we navigate these rough waters. So I will stop talking. Thank you, Carrie. And, um, signing off.
I want to actually say something. That was why I signed on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I put my headset on to be clear that I want to make sure that Carrie can hear me and everyone can hear me. Carrie sacrificed so much, um, for the students and, you know, didn't just do the work, but did it fully and has survived. She's our, uh, our triple P superhero in that she guided us through Powder House, remember that? Uh, guided us through the paraprofessional negotiations and guided us through the onset of an unprecedented pandemic. Personally, uh, Carrie, when I signed on as vice chair, my intention was to be Chair in 2020. Uh, I got a full-time job that I wasn't expecting and didn't think I could handle it. And Carrie, God love her, stepped in and then was the Chair during the pandemic. And for that, I will, I, appreciation is an understatement. And that is one minor example of the sacrif, the sacrifices that Carrie will make, without ever asking for acknowledgement because she's truly dedicated. And, you know, as I said, like, just cares about the students and doing right by them. So personally, uh, I, I can't thank you enough.
Ms. Barrish. Sorry, Carrie, not yet. We're not done yet.
Um, this will be brief and I'm not going to turn my camera on because my computer is telling me that I'm about to lose bandwidth. But, um, everyone else has said it probably better than I can. But something, I'll just touch on something that always is, strikes me with Carrie is, is the way, like Chair Green said, she remembers every person's name. She knows something personal about every person. She never forgets what's important to that person and why she knows them. She delivers the best compliments, the most personal, meaningful compliments of anyone I, I think I know. And, um, gosh, there was one more thing I wanted to say. Oh, and I feel like I don't know the half of the work that she's done in the past year or two because she doesn't complain about it. And like someone else said, she doesn't look for, you know, for a clap on the back or for applause. She does it because she's committed to the kids of Somerville. And for that example, I am so incredibly grateful. And so I thank you.
Before I call, I just want to say, seven days into this, I promise you, or you don't know the half of it because I didn't and I've done that before. Um, so Ms. Phillips, then Mayor Curtis Tony.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. First of all, I just want to thank Carrie Norman for all of her work. Carrie Norman has had an eighty-hour-a-week job for two years. And she's worked tirelessly for it and for all of us and our kids. Um, the other day I was listening to a podcast about how the Chicago Public Schools transformed themselves. And what they did is they invested in leaders and their good leaders built other good leaders and strong leaders. And one of the things that I think of when I think of Carrie Norman is her skills at leadership development and building up people. And an example that comes to my mind is the first motion that I threw down on the school committee, which at the time was a pretty controversial motion that I threw down as an amendment to another motion. And instead of looking at me as a beginner who had been there for one month and had no idea what she was doing, Carrie Norman very kindly walked me through the process of how exactly to do what I wanted to do, even though she didn't want to do it at all. And for that, I am extremely grateful.
She did the same thing with me my first year. Mayor Curtis Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, um, have often questions from other mayors who by their charter, the Chair of the School Committee asked me, wouldn't I want to do that? I'm like, no, thank you, quite honestly. And I don't mean that in a negative way, but it is not a position, it's a busy.
The mayor has frozen. Hopefully he'll.
And as you know, I'm just a second on Mr. Chairman, that requires. Yes, I mean, okay, let's say it requires a full-time dedication. It's more than running meetings. You're not just facilitating the regular meetings of the school committee. You're facilitating, uh, so much more conversation within the community with, between city and school staff. When I first came into public offices and all of them, and even as mayor, there was still this sort of embedded culture between it's the cities and the schools and the schools, just the city. And it took a lot of years and a lot of great progressive leaders, um, and former administrators on both sides that really bridged that. And I'm blessed to work with so many great colleagues on both sides, but in the case of the schools, who made sure that we're working together with one goal in mind for the, what's best interest of our kids and our families. And, uh, and we broke away from what we needed to do for the schools just in our neighborhoods, but for every child and with a focus on them was vulnerable and a focus on equity. And I thank Carrie for her leadership on that and to be in a very collaborative, supporting, corrective voice for me as well to as we navigate some of the most tumultuous, uh, times we're all facing as well. And I look forward to carrying that on with you, Mr. Chairman, but I say thank you, Carrie, for all that.
Okay, Ms. Superintendent Skipper.
So, um, I said a lot the last time, but, um, I can't help myself. So with all the different capacities that Carrie served, I think I have talked to Carrie almost every day of the week for. Um, so with all the different capacities that Carrie served, I think I have talked to Carrie almost every day of the week for years. And, um, to the point that in the, in the really difficult, intense times, I probably talked to her more than my husband cumulatively. You know, the thing I think I would, I will remember most about Carrie in is, is certainly for me, a, a model or a guide is that she is grounded with a moral compass, which is really the sign of a tremendous leader. There can be politics flying. There can be, um, personal stuff flying. It doesn't matter how thick something is. Carrie's moral compass, which is driven by her love for kids, is the thing that grounds her all the time. And because of that, I think she has been a steward of that, uh, for our school committee in all her capacities. But she's certainly been that for me in her capacities as superintendent. So, um, I'm still going to call you and bug you, maybe not every day, maybe every other. But, um, I, I, I really do appreciate, um, the powerful model of a woman leader that you have provided for me.
Okay, now, Ms. Norman, if you, if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to.
I, I, um, I am deeply touched and, um, humored. To Andre's point, to Sarah's point, uh, no, we don't always agree, but we come out, how we have those conversations, keeping the focus on kids, uh, we've all become better leaders, uh, together collaboratively. I mean, I, Laura was talking about the tot lot and, you know, my oldest started at the Healy 15 years ago and my, my youngest will be halfway through his senior year when this term is up this, you know, next December and, the schools have changed. Uh, the mayor referenced it. It, 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 we used, it used to be a whole bunch of fiefdoms, whatever that word is. And, and we've moved that bar so far. And there's been a lot of unexpected things, uh, along the way. And, I'm going to get a little messy. For me, I, uh, I grew up, uh, single mom, four daughters. Winters without heat, uh, no food, no, you know, you don't have heat, your pipes freeze, you don't have water. Uh, you can only imagine, right? So all of those logistics. And if it wasn't for public schools, if it wasn't for some very key years, uh, I literally would not be here. And I never would have gone to college and, and all of those things that have come from that all come from public schools. So for me, it is, um, deeply gratifying. Being with the kids is often hilarious because you have no idea what they're going to say. They do not suffer fools lightly and will call, how will I say this politely nonsense on nonsense? And I've always, I enjoy that. And I miss seeing them and I miss seeing our educators. I'm, so I'm grateful. And I also, I mean, I do want to thank all of my colleagues both for making me better and challenging me, but also constituents and educators. I, I think you think better when you have to really explain it when you think it through. And I also just want to thank all of you for making the donation in my honor of the Somerville Ed Fund. I can't think of a, a better way, uh, or way that I would have been more pleased to, to have that, that kind of gift, uh, that gives to the community. So, it, it's been, it's been wacky. I have to say, Mary, I, I, we do talk a lot. I, I, I also miss Pete. So maybe I'll just call, you know, during the donor hour too. So, um, you've all made me better too, and I appreciate that. So I'm going to stop. But.
No, we miss you.
I love brother.
So with that, I mean, I am grateful too, because this isn't ever one person. And I do appreciate people reminding me to keep my sense of humor because I do think you can't do any kind of complicated world work without treating each other well, even when you disagree, uh, finding the joy and hopefully finding some laughs along the way. So thank you for all the very kind words.
All right, let's do this all over again for Emily. Uh, Ms. Kupson.
Sorry, my computer is being a little bit slow. You also have my full permission to skip over this.
Request denied.
No, no, no.
Whatever you ready, Ms. Kupson.
Except that my computer is.
Okay, then.
Frozen, sorry.
Will you help her out since you, you co-wrote it? Embarrassed?
Sorry about that. I think it's coming up. We must all be having bandwidth problems here.
She's trying to tell us something.
It's a race between me and, and Alana here to get our documents to open. And I apologize for the delay.
Do you want me to chime in? It says Laura, I can see it.
Sure, someone read it.
Sure. I love Emily just as much as everyone else. So Dr. Emily Ackman, School Committee, Ward One. Whereas Emily Ackman has served as Vice Chair of the Somerville School Committee for 2019 and 2020. And whereas during Dr. Ackman's tenure as Vice Chair, she has guided the committee with grace and perseverance during a global pandemic. Never thought that would be on a resolution. Whereas during Dr. Ackman's tenure as Vice Chair and Chair of the Rules Committee, the school committee developed a progressive new equity policy. And whereas Dr. Ackman has been proactive in mentoring new colleagues, and whereas Dr. Ackman has demonstrated a focus on how to best serve the students of SPS, therefore it be resolved that the Somerville School Committee publicly acknowledges the efforts of Emily Ackman and be it further resolved that this well-earned resolution be included in the minutes of tonight's meeting and then a framed copy to be presented to Dr. Ackman.
Thank you, Ms. Patone. Again, I'm going to, I'm going to take advantage of my priority to call myself first. There was one line in that resolution that I almost wanted to have edited when it said she's been a mentor to new members. Because I don't think that's, that's fair. I think she's been a mentor to all of us. I think every conversation I've had with, with Emily Ackman, including our first one, before she took, before she took office, I have learned something. To say that she is, you know, that she's convinced education policy is obviously a grotesque understatement. But, but I think more importantly, I think more relevant to this body that she is committed to the ways in which we actually actualize education policy. And the ways in which the conversations we have about macro, macro levers and changes, what does it really mean as far as improving the education of every individual student? And that focus and the fact that frankly, she's completely brilliant. That combination, seriously, like I say, every conversation I've ever had with her has made me smarter. It has been a joy and a pleasure and a privilege serving alongside you these last three plus years. So thank you. Ms. Kupson, you ready to talk? Description?
Yes, I'm try, I don't know. I'm having technical difficulties. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, sorry, I didn't get to read the resolution. I just wanted to say that Emily is smart, hardworking, always happy to help and encourage new members to jump right in. And can't imagine having started the school committee in these crazy times without leadership. And I didn't get a chance to say my own words to Carrie. So I'm just kind of bundling them in together that I feel like Emily and Carrie together really taught me what I needed to know and really helped me just jump right in. So I can't thank you both enough. And I'm excited that we continue to get to work together and hopefully in smoother times we can meet, uh, for a drink, toast both of you and to give both of you a hug, which I am looking forward to because these things are just not the same, not in person.
God, I miss hugs. All right, um, Ms. Norman.
I, uh, I, I, I'm all flustered. So I don't know who just said it, but I'm going to echo it. The thing about Dr. Ackman that I, I continue to be impressed with is it's one thing to have high ideals. It's another thing that she keeps pushing us. How do you actualize those? What does that look like? What does that mean? How do you, how do you measure it? How do you actually do it? And, it's really easy to have platitudes. It's a very different thing to actually make them happen. I, call me a cynic, I'm, I'm not a fan of vision statements or mission statements, and I still will never understand the difference between the two. They don't mean much to me unless you actually do the work. And Emily, uh, has always done that work and she has been, a kind and realistic and often humor ear when I just needed to blow off some steam. So thank you for that. And thank you for, uh, the many texts of your very beautiful, adorable children. They came, uh, often at just the right moment. So thank you to you and thank you to your beautiful family because I know, especially with the younger ones, it's, it's been a sacrifice. So thank you.
Ms. Barish.
Thank you for the opportunity. Dr. Ackman, as mentioned in the resolution, um, is quick to offer, um, advice and guidance. And you know, Carrie said something about how students are quick to call nonsense on nonsense. And I would say the same goes for Dr. Ackman. I appreciate her, like, straight to the point, efficient and effective, methods. And I really hope that I can, if there's any way I can, like, capture those and bring them into my own work as I take the reins on rules. I sure hope I will. Um, I really appreciate about that about you and I look forward to learning as much as I can from you in the coming years. So thank you.
If you've ever had the pleasure of being in a meeting run by Dr. Ackman, trust me, they move quickly. Ms. Phillips, Ms. Patone, then Superintendent Skipper.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. When I think of Dr. Ackman's many, many gifts in addition to her ability to facilitate an excellent meeting, I think of her, you know, I think of her as like a stage guide that you want walking by your side, you know, when, you know, there was no handbook for new school committee members, she made one. And so I got to have one. When, you know, I, we, I started on school committee and we were having a drink and I wanted to know how, as a working mom of two kids, do you actually do this? And still live? She had like 10 very practical suggestions on how exactly do you make it work? When I was super frustrated at the wording of a policy from M A S D, she very clearly explained to me, this is what you need to do to get it changed and get it changed in a way where we don't spend four days deliberating on it, but we actually just change it. Um, and I really appreciate that. I've learned so much from getting to work with you. Um, I'm sad I won't be on rules with you, uh, in the coming year, but I, I really thank you for everything that you've done.
Ms. Patone.
Thank you, Chair Green, through you, uh, to the committee. Emily, um, you're thoughtful, you're super frank, which I love, and you are hilarious in all, in all ways, um, but serious when you need to be. You know, Emily, you're an active feminist and you're a vocal anti-racist and, um, a professional who, who really uses her professional expertise to ask challenging questions and has a sincere concern regarding the quality of our education as well as concern for our educators and equity. So I call those the three E's. Education, educators and equity. So I just really wanted to point it out, those things that I really admire in you and appreciate in your leadership. And, um, thank you for always been willing to speak your mind, no matter which way the wind was blowing. And that's always been an incredible contribution to our discussions and the actions of the school committee. So thank you.
Superintendent Skipper.
You know, it's, um, in terms of, having somebody that really understands the deep parts of education, it was really nice having and being able to have those conversations with you. But as super smart as you are and all that stuff, the thing that, that just kind of stands out to me is it, you're like a lioness when it comes to equity. You know, you're like, you, you don't, you don't accept anything less for all of our kids that you would for your own. And that's pretty important. And, you know, when we hit tough issues with equity or have started to, you're the first one to say, what do you need? And so I really appreciate that and feel very connected to you about that. And so keep doing that because we're going to need that and need that championship going forward.
Dr. Ackman, do you have anything you want to say?
Gladly. I mean, uh, it is heartening to know that my colleagues find my frankness, uh, not irritating, uh, because I certainly, uh, there's some part of my brain that's worried about it. Obviously not the part of the brain that controls my mouth. So, um, I, I, I'm humbled and I can't thank you enough. And I am so thankful to be doing this work and to be doing this work with each of you. And yeah, I look forward to continuing to fight for equity. And, um, I'm glad that, you know, as a body, you don't mind my like jumping 10 steps ahead sometimes and being like, well, what about this? And what if we do it this way? And, uh, I look forward to pushing the envelope on, on what our schooling can look like. I'm really excited for that. Um, and you know, Superintendent Skipper, I know we, we thanked Carrie, but, uh, your leadership as well during the three Ps that I, you know, um, I, I can't, you know, thank you enough, uh, for that. And that's just during my tenure. I know you were working hard before I got here. Um, and Andre, I have to thank you for the fact that you're Chair this year, um, because I, that's fine, that's fine. I'll, I'll fully, I'll fully own that one. Um, and I look forward to one day feeling that I have the bandwidth, uh, to hopefully be Chair of this committee. Even though it's not this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I kind of wish I had saved that for absolute last because that's, it's such a, it's such a good, didn't go out on, but we do have a few more items of business. My understanding is that Mr. Ma is going to give us an in-class memo, which we have, which we have in the handouts. And if we have people have questions, I encourage them to ask that on, ask them on the 25th. So I will entertain a motion to accept some donations.
Hi. It was, I move to accept with gratitude the following donations, uh, from the Looters Environmental, uh, from Nita Mass of $50 for the Somerville Public Schools and from John Moran, Marimba, uh, the value of $5,500 for this Somerville High School Profession Program.
Is there a second?
Second, this is Sarah Phillips.
I have a motion by Ms., by Ms. Norman, seconded by Dr. Phillips to accept donations. Um, three, another second, all, we have to use viral call vote, Superintendent Skipper.
Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Kupson?
Yes.
President McLaughlin? Mayor Curtis Tony?
Yes.
The Green?
Yes.
Barish?
Yes.
Tone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries to accept the donations.
If we have any items, any new business or items for all poll members, I will hear them now.
Mr. Green, this is Carrie Norman. I would just, at a future date, another update on where student enrollments are would be helpful sometime in the next month or two. Thank you.
Put that on the February agenda. Anything else from the pro members? Hearing nothing. Ms. Kupson, are there any condolences?
There are. The Somerville School Committee sends our deepest condolences to the families of Anne Marie Mahoney, mother to Patricia O'Brien, teacher at the Argenziano School, Christopher Donnelly, father to Jackie Lawrence, teacher at the Capuano School and former STA president, Ellen Scoos, sister to Patty Marks, retired executive secretary to the superintendent of schools, Barbara Hawks, mother-in-law to Michelle Bennett, teacher at the Kennedy School, and Karen Considine, sister to Kim Conley, teacher at the Healy School.
Very adjourned. Good night, everyone. Colleagues, I'll see you early in the morning.